All right. Welcome, everyone. This is the New Hanover County Board of Education interim meeting. The date is August 17th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll?
Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Boyer.
Here.
Judy Justice. Judy Justice. Stephanie Crable.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker. And Pete Wildebohr.
I am present.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. All right, we have five members currently present and that constitutes a quorum, so we will get started. Our first item on the agenda is a work session for the first thirty minutes, and we will be continuing our discussion around board committees. And I'm actually going to pass the microphone to Ms. Stephanie Crable to get us started on this conversation, and we will go from there.
Am I allowed to take my mask off to talk into the microphone? Like if I talk away from people?
We still have governmental, governmental preference for governmental meetings.
I just want to make sure folks can hear me unmuffled. I think I usually don't have a problem with that, but we'll just make sure. Okay, so, um, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this again, board members, and I really wish we were kind of sitting around a table. It was almost easier to do it when we were on Zoom because I could see everybody's face. But I really don't, I don't feel like we got anything really accomplished at the last time other than really just to start the conversation. So, um, I don't... If you look in, um, on Symbly, you know, all of the different policies that pertain to board committees, they're all in there. And, um, I apologize, I had printed these out for hard copy because I'm a hard copy kind of girl, and, um, they're sitting on my printer at home. So, um, we're just gonna have to go back and forth and have Crystal or I need to help us out on the board. So if we could just pull up real quick the, um, board committee PDF, and I think that'll be a good starting spot for us. Okay, so, this is, um, the board, this is the, and could you just scroll slowly so we can just have a look at it? This is listing all of the committees that we have. And this is not what is on the website anymore because on the website, um, the communications department was trying to streamline a little bit and they took off all the info except for the committees and the chair. So these are all of the committees that we have, and that is also what Crystal did put, um, at our desks. So this is something that we all can be looking at. All right, so what I, um, this is not intended to be a policy committee meeting. This is basically intended for us to just talk with each other and perhaps even get some input from our subject matter experts. Most of them are sitting right over here, you know, to our left, um, in, um, the senior administration. So what I, what I really wanted for us to do tonight was just to look at these committees and decide, do we have the right committees? And then, um, we can get that down and then we can, um, Nelson and I can take, and Pete, um, can take that to the policy committee, you know, for revision, um, at the, at the time that we're ready. So, um, I guess, you know, probably is the easiest way for me just to go down the list and everybody just say, "Yeah, I like it," or "No, I don't," you know? What do you think?
I think that's a good starting place.
Okay, all right, so let's start at the beginning. Budget Development Committee, um, entire board, gotta have that. Um, the, the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. We want to keep that. Family Communication.
Can I ask a question on that?
I'm sorry, yeah?
Uh, if I could just, you know, is it, at what point do we, uh, open the doors and allow folks to join these committees or, or apply to, you know, I mean, just the general population?
Hold that thought because that's coming. That's coming.
Okay.
That is definitely on my agenda.
I apologize.
Yeah, and that's okay, nope, gotta get it out there. All right, so, um, Family Communications Committee. That has been very successful. Um, the Student Scholarships for Future Teachers. Um, the Policy Committee, gotta have that, that's part of our charge. Um, Title IX Committee. Feeling like that should stay. Um, the Board of Directors for Head Start. And we, we kind of have to keep that one.
You missed Advisory Council for Exceptional Students.
Oh, I meant, you're right, sorry. Um, Advisory Council for Exceptional Students, and, but that is not a board, that is not an official board committee. Um, we don't sponsor that, and that's what I guess I'd need to just ask for clarification. Um, are we the official sponsor of that, um, Ms. Barnum? Or is that a board member on, representative on that from us? Oh, yeah, come up here, or just, yeah. That's okay.
Um, to, by the time I joined the district about eight years ago, it was, there was definitely a board member representative on the council, but I'm not, I'm not aware where, you know, of what its designation is as a board committee or not, so...
Well, then that's okay because that's something that we...
Actually, if you look, it's, um, Board of Education Representatives is right above Advisory Council. All of the remaining committees are representative committees. We're not running them, we just have a rep.
Okay, just making sure. The, all right, so, the, so the...
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
It's a vital position that is very vital in order to communicate what's going on, so I'm not sure which way we can be not sponsoring it. It's actually the district is sponsoring this week because the parents want to have information going on.
Oh, no, that's, that's, that's key. We just get them in the right, in the right column. That's not a big deal. I mean, it's, it's not going away and I'm not suggesting that. At all.
Sorry, Beth.
Okay, no, that, that, well taken, it's not going away.
Ms. Crable.
We'll get it in the right category. Yes?
Just hope I can chime in real quick. I just want to make sure that after we revise this, um, that we have the policy be very clear about whether a particular committee is a committee of the board or a committee that the board is recognizing to, um, you know, conduct board business or to provide advice and, you know, input to the board. Um, because if it is, then that's gonna need to be a, a meeting that complies with open meetings law. If it's simply a committee that has, that we are not necessarily recognizing or establishing or that we're asking, um, to provide, you know, to do work of the board, that we're just gonna send a board person delegate, um, then I think we need to be really clear about that.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that, Colin, because that, I guess I probably should have printed my agenda out because that was also another item that I wanted to talk about so that we were, we were all clear on what our roles and responsibilities were on these teams. All right, so, with that, you know, being pointed out that we are now into the Board of Representative, um, Board of Education Representatives, are there any other committees that the board need? Excuse me?
I think that was just...
He was just like a blip, okay. Um, are there any other committees that you, that this board wants us to consider adding as a board-driven committee?
As, as I've mentioned before, I think that a legislative committee would be extremely helpful.
Good idea.
Okay. So, um, Colin, let me just ask you this question. So should I, I'm just keeping notes on what we've done, and this would be, these notes we would take to the policy committee, correct?
Sure, that's the one we could do it, and then have the policy committee draft revised policy to bring back and recommend to the board, is that what you're imagining?
Yes, that, that, because I'm imagining this whole talk that we're having right now is just so we can all get things out so that when we take it to the policy committee for a change, that when we bring it back, it's not a whole lot of discussion because we've already discussed it. That was kind of my, my thought process.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Well, and as I shared before, I'm, I'm muted. Um, you know, the, the whole idea, and, and I don't, I still, I guess we're still working it out and, and that kind of thing, but the whole idea of having a committee as these huge things come up, um, you know, I, I threw out the name Transparency Committee, but whatever committee we want to call it, um, you know, I, I just think we need to have a frontline, um, area that, that, you know, and, and we have a communication committee, but one where, you know, parents and others can communicate with us, share, share their concerns, uh, you know, and then, like I say, if we continue to try to not streamline our meetings because I, yeah, I think it's very, very important to hear from all our parents, um, but I do think it's very important that we have some avenue that parents can, you know, bounce things off of us. I know that's more or less the, the whole committee, uh, or the whole board, but I mean, I still think we need to have some kind of a investigative slash, uh, truth committee. So, um, since we're throwing out names, I guess we'll just use the Transparency Committee at this point, uh, as a possibility.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a note of that and then we can talk about what that looks like. Yep, Ms. Justice?
Yes, uh, and I've talked about this, um, with Mr. Wildebohr before and other members of the board. The name transparency is really not, to me, feeling appropriate. I think Advisory Board with, not just parents, but community members. So when, uh, situations where people are concerned about the schools and a variety of topics, the parents are, no, I'm saying parents. The community members as a committee would have an opportunity to give input from their perspective and then bring it back to the board. I mean, we get emails and all kinds of other information, but it would be good to have people on a committee that are very familiar with what's going on in the schools because that's what happens on a standing committee. And if it was the right type of broad representation, we could get really community voices. And it would just be an advisory committee, but it would bring transparency because that's one of the things that look at, accountability, uh, and a voice to the community. And so, when Mr. Wildebohr actually brought this up to me and other members a while back, I thought that was a good idea because we need more input from the community. Uh, and obviously, the community's screaming for it from all the emails and other information we get.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a note of that, and then when we move farther down the agenda, we can figure out what, um, what the committees might look like, who might chair them, what the membership might look like, so I've got those two noted. Um, are there any other committees that we're thinking that we need to have that we actually chair and run and work directly with a school system subject matter expert?
Yeah, I would just like to second Ms. Adams' idea about a legislative committee.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Those, those relationships are key to everything that this board can do. We don't have our own checkbook, we have to ask others to borrow theirs, and so those relationships, I think, are just vital, and I think we need to do a good job nurturing those and making sure that they remain strong.
Okay.
Well, and if I can, if I can interject one more time. Um, number one, I think that Ms. Adams' suggestion is very, very strong. Uh, so I think that would definitely be something we want to look at. And I have no, absolutely no problem with, uh, Ms. Justice's suggestion. You know, I, like I say, I'm not all stuck on a name, so if we want to call it Advisory Committee, uh, let's go for that instead, just, you know, what, as she said, it'd be transparent, but let's call it the Advisory Committee.
Okay, so for the sake of this conversation today, I'm gonna call it a Community Advisory Committee?
Mm-hmm, right.
Perfect.
Okay.
It's not, it's not just parents.
No, that's right, okay. And then, and so that, that'll come later on what that would look like when we add new committees in there. Okay, so now that we, any others, you know, Mr. McManus, do you have any? I didn't hear anything from, um, Ms. Walker either, so... Okay, all right, so now let's, let's move into the, um, the Board of Education has a representative on the committee, and that is one thing that I did, I did want to call to everyone's attention just to remind that, um, these meetings would not be open necessarily to, um, to open meetings laws because they are run by the school system and they have a Board of Education member, um, on them as a, as a committee member. You know, whether to vote or give input, have a voice, that kind of thing. Yes, Ms. Justice?
Okay, some of these committees aren't run by the school Board of Education, like the Hannah Block. That's just an example because I'm looking down at it, so...
I'm going, I'm gonna go down the list.
Okay, okay, but I'm just, you just said that they were run by the school system. I said they're not necessarily.
I know, I'm gonna go down the list and we're gonna, we're gonna point those things out so that we can keep it kind of like, I'm, I'm making columns of where they are.
I was just clarifying your language.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Children, Exceptional Students. So we, um, that is, we're just one member on that team. And so, um, we will figure out who the chairperson of that is, you know, as we're going forward. You know, who on the school system runs that, um, that kind of thing.
We don't figure that out, the, the committee figures their chairperson out. And then we're an advisor on the committee, that's why, and we're advisory.
That's what I meant. The board representative will be on the committee and, and that shouldn't change, but Dr. Faust and his team will decide who is going to chair that, and then we can get the right information put on our website.
What? I'm sorry.
Judy, these are, these are committees that are run by the school system.
The people on the advisory committee decide who the chairperson is, not, not us.
Okay, that is not written in our policy anywhere, so I can write that down for us to... Um, it was my understanding that, and Dr. Faust, jump in, that the, the committees that we sit on as liaisons basically back to the board, um, you'll, you slash yours team, put the team together and name a subject matter expert and a person who chairs that committee. Okay?
No, we are advisories, we do not chair the committee. Same with the Hannah Block, I'm not sure where you're coming from with this. Dr. Faust, we don't, the, the, of the Exceptional Children Advisory Committee, they, they pick their own chair, not us. That's what she just said.
No, the board, no. Meaning, when she's saying us, she's saying the school district, the employees.
No, the parents are on that group.
Right.
Right, they decide who the chairperson is.
But they work through, I'll say, my designees. They just can't have a meeting and call themselves, um, advisory committee. It's orchestrated through our offices and then we make sure, so that's what we're saying.
Okay, well, that's what you just said, and I agree with that. She just said that you, that you picked the chairperson just previously, and I'm saying, or the district did, we don't. The people on the, who we approve, what it'll work with, pick their chairperson, and one of them is, is usually parents.
I think they're actually saying the same things right now, so let's move on.
Yes, and so, um, and then, because, hold that thought because we are gonna talk about that in another step down. Um, so the Board of Directors for Head Start, um, and so that one, we really have to, you know, Nelson has to be on the, but if, if you read in the description, we are actually their board of directors, you know, so...
Yes, the entire board.
We can't get rid of that one, you know, and we can't even get rid of, of a thing. Um, Calendar Committee, um, so that is, we're a board liaison, and is that, um, Dr. Smith? Who's in, who leads that committee? Okay. And then, uh, and, and so, the board, let's go back to the, um, Head Start. Is that led by Shannon Smiles?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Smiles is the director, um, and, you know, she leads our Board of Directors, yes.
So like she leads the content and she gets the main...
Yes, we're just the governing body for that.
Gotcha. And then, so the Advisory Council for Except, let's go back to that one. So who in the school system would be the best person, um, to at least get conversations rolling to be the leader of that? For the Advisory Council for Exceptional Students?
That's two separate things you're talking about.
That would be, um, Dr. Jones.
Oh, Dr. Jones, okay.
Julie or Dr. Jones.
Okay. Gotta start somewhere, so we'll just at least have somebody to go to. Okay. Um, and then, so the Curriculum Committee, um, is that Dr. Smith as well? Okay. And then Educator of the Year Committee, um...
Oh, who will be...
There's a whole team that does that, but who?
That will be, um, HR, that comes out of HR.
HR? So let's just put HR and then we'll figure out who the actual person is as we're getting into our committee work. Okay? Um, this will be important in the, when we get to the next, the next thing. So the Hannah Block USO Committee, um, the school system representative there is Jackie Booth, um, from, also from Curriculum Department.
From what I understand, they, they requested a member of the board itself, and I think there was a problem with her making the meetings or something that was going on last year. I haven't heard a whole lot more, but I do believe that they had requested to be a member of the, the Hannah Block.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I was talking with Susan Habis and she's very hacky, ha- happy with Jackie, but we can look at that, um, again, as we, as we're looking, when we're doing the definitions.
And this, this came out last year, or maybe, but I haven't heard any further discussions since then that they want a board member.
Okay, the, um, yeah, okay, that's noted. Um, so the Legion Stadium Commission, um, whoever, Pete, who, who leads that? Do you know?
Uh, it, it, yeah, it's actually one of our, um, uh, city councilmen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and, and I'm sure that your group elects the leader each time, you know, each, whatever.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so the Hannah Block Committee probably does the same thing. Um, but right now, I think it's... And Parks and Rec, yeah?
It's the same, same way.
Okay.
You know, we, you know, we, we elect the, uh, you know, this year anyway, we, we elected the, you know, the chairperson.
Is Parks and Gardens through the county or through the city?
Uh, it's through the county.
Okay. Okay, got that. Um, and then, um, so CTEC is a, an advisory, CTEC was called an advisory, um, committee, and that is basically, um, their, their, their chair rotates through that. And, um, so, Ms. Futrell was going to be working with, um, the CTEC principal and the advisory committee that's there to redefine that. Um, and I wanted to add in there, um, the SHAC, the School Health Advisory Committee. Um, we, when we were reviewing, you know, Policy 6140, which is the old 8620, um, it says that we need to have a school board member on there, so we do need to, um, add that. Um, are there any other committees, Dr. Faust, or, um, team that you think that, um, you would like to have a school board member on or that, that you think we need to be there, other than?
I think we are all covered, I mean, honestly, with the ones that we have.
Okay.
Just for clarification, Ms. Crable, for SHAC, you said that there needs to be a board member assigned to that?
Officially assigned.
That's, that's currently in policy, we're good to go, because that would be, that would be my role at this point, so...
Well, we're still pu, yeah, we are still, um, finalizing that policy that there's a couple of things we have to do, and one of those, the easiest one, is adding us, adding one person. Um, I'm already on that team, but I'm not in that, I'm not on that team as a board member. I'm on that team as a community representative.
All right, so if there are any board members that are interested in serving as the representative, um, for SHAC, uh, just send me an email, let me know if there's interest.
Uh, where, where is SHAC? I've been looking on this.
It is Policy 8620 that was approved three years ago, perhaps, maybe two years ago.
So it's not in this list you gave me?
Huh?
It's not on this list, is what I'm looking for.
It's, no, that's what I'm saying, it's, that's one that we need to add, that we found from Policy, um, Committee that we need to add.
What does SHAC stand for? I'm having...
School Health Advisory Council.
Okay, sounds good.
And, um, we do have a Wellness Coordinator that runs that, her name is Lauren Tyson, and has been doing that, it was Scott Anderson before that. So it's been about three years, maybe four, because I lose track with the, um, with the COVID, you know, connection in there, but...
Well, it's possible maybe that fell through during maybe the 2018, 19 board assignments and stuff. It, it just wasn't brought up and it just sort of fell through, of course.
I think what probably happened was the, um, it wasn't in our 8620 policy, and when we, when we were updating for the State School Board Association, um, we didn't have the right language in our old policy. So now, we, we are working on getting that language in our old, in our new policy. And so, I'm just trying to...
So somebody left it off.
Pardon me?
Somebody had, didn't put it on there originally when they planned it.
I don't think they even thought about it at the time, but who knows? But yeah, but, uh, but no one from the school board was put on the SHAC, you know, as an official... School board members did attend, like Ms. Eastapp and, um, Mr. Shell did attend our meetings from time to time.
Okay, here's a concern when I hear things like that. What else, we may not even know, what are, there have been other committees and advisory groups that, that are out there, so possibly during some updated time, somebody could see if there has been anything besides a SHAC group that's been left off, because...
So I would say that that's what the NCSBA update is all about, and that's why we're trying to move as quickly as possible. Well, the, the, the NCS, this was found because of the update, because we're updating our policies, so that's why we're doing that.
Is there a possible, there's others?
Sure, sure.
That's what we need to be looking at before we update anything to make sure we cover all this.
And, and I would suggest that we update as we go, since we're starting it right now, and then we just add more if we find them.
Okay, but in the meantime, we need to be looking around and finding out what's going on.
Okay.
Just because it's a 24.
Okay, sorry. Okay, um, so then the other, the ad hoc committees, I just wanted to get clear on which ad hoc committees we actually have and which ones we do not need anymore. So Bond Priorities, do we still need that?
Oh, yeah.
Capital Requests, still need that? Dress Code Policy?
At this point, no.
No, we do not need Dress.
Okay, so we, um, so, that is not written into our policy, that is just one that we just take off of our books, okay? Um, and then Isaac Baer, um, High School Building Committee?
Absolutely.
Stay on. Um, NCSBA Legislative Committee Services, we do need that. And then, um, the Board Meetings and Agenda Ad hoc. Are we done with that?
Yes. Well, yes, because you completed that in the policy committee.
All right, so now, the, the, the next thing I wanted you all to take a look at, and you can easily email, um, me, Nelson, or Pete for, um, for policy, but the, the goal is to have each one of our committees that we are directly responsible for to have, um, like a mission statement and some goals because there's, there's nothing worse to me than having a committee that just has no goals and has no endpoint, so that we don't need a committee if we're just gonna be there just talking. So each of the different committees, you know, should be cognizant about goals. Um, and then also, I wanted to get a uniform, um, placed on our website that says that, you know, who is our chair, you know, who is the chair of the committee? Um, and then, um, if it's a board committee, then we name, then we name the board members. If it is a school system employee, then we name that, and, um, and I'm using the word subject matter expert because even the board committees that we chair, we still need the, you know, our, our team from the, the school system. So just to have, does anybody have any preference? Like, some of them have them broken down by staff, by community member, by parents, by, you know, so...
I think I would like to see in policy just certain requirements that every board committee has posted the chair.
Okay.
The members, and the, the mission or the goals of the committee. At least that is the minimum that all committees have.
Yes.
That's my preference, and that's not to say that if committees are, have their own websites or anything else that they're doing, that's great, if, if there's additional information, but I think that there's some basic information, I think, needs to be in policy that I, I think should be...
These are the ones we all have. And also have a description of the work, like, like who, who, not who Stephanie, you know, Judy are the members, but who we want to draw from for our membership.
I would also like to see a uniform standard adopted across the policy, uh, across the committees about how we, uh, get people on and off.
Correct.
When, and when the application...
And when the applications are, and I would like to, that should be uniformed across Policy Committee, Title IX Committee, et cetera.
And, but the problem with that is with our advisory committees, because they're gonna have a different one. They possibly are because...
Well, I was only speaking of the committees that we control directly.
The standing committees.
Yes, yes. And then also, probably too, to, um, to Pete's point, then even the subject matter expert from the school system who runs the team should also have some, um, goal, some membership criteria or membership application. And in talking with, um, several of the committee chairs and with some of our subject matter experts, we did all think that there should be a uniform, um, um, application to be, like name, address, you know, all of the basic demographic information, and perhaps, and these, and you guys are welcome to send in questions, but we were thinking about, um, like what's, what committee do you want to be on? So if you want to be on more than one committee, then you'd have to have a separate application because then you would, just one sec, Judy, I'll get you. Um, and then we would put in there, um, what skill sets do you bring to this committee work? What experience can you bring to this committee work? Oh my gosh, and Dr. Smith, you gave me a really great one that I thought I was gonna remember. What was it? Can you remember it?
Why do you want to be a part of this?
Oh, why do you want to be part of this committee? Thank you, duh! You know? The very basic, um, so like just three things, and then, so each person would need to elaborate a little bit on why they thought they were a good fit. And then, my hopes were to be, within the next month or two, then we would open up all of our committees to membership, um, and then each committee would be looking at, um, a rolling off period, like a term limit, you know, per, you know, like one year, two year, three year, so that we're not always turning over our whole committees. Um, but that is something that we did, I didn't know if we wanted to put that into our policy or if we wanted to really start some board, um, standard operating procedures. You need, um, so feedback on that is good, sorry. Judy, did you have one last question before Stephanie says it up?
Well, we're, okay, here's the thing. You told us that we were gonna be going over the policy, You told us that we were going to be going over the policy, uh, and the policy, uh, was 233-0, which is about, which is concerns our committees. And there's a lot more in that than just the committees itself that I wanted to talk about, and I think we're running out of time. Uh, like who picks, uh, who, how the decision is made for people to be placed on the committee. Um, and, you know, I'm right about the, the, um, rotating part. I mean, some of that stuff I already thought of, but we do need to have more discussion about how people are placed on committees and also when there's, uh, also the agenda, people that attend the, as, you know, the agenda review, so things like that that we haven't even touched on yet. These are things we do need to talk about and we have over the last year, I know at least, brought up occasionally, they haven't been fleshed out. So I would like to, during our next work session, since we have run, are running out of time, I'd like us to go ahead and, and continue this discussion.
So could we, I, I'm, we can absolutely do that, Ms. Justice. Can we, in the meantime, since there will be a policy meeting prior to that?
Right.
Okay. Um, would you prefer us to send our suggestions for all of these things that we're talking about? Any ideas about the committees, the things you'd like to see, policy versus best practice? And, and let's, and, and so policy can start discussing it as well?
Absolutely, yeah. Let's do that and then we can get Colin to, um, help us draft some wording so that we have something to actually look at and evaluate for that.
All right, board members, you've got homework.
But then the only reason I put these other committees up here for, um, because in, you know, we, we don't, it wasn't listed in here now that I just saw that, is the, um, the Cape Fear Committee, um, Community College Trustee. That is, that shows up in this committee, no, it doesn't.
That's an example.
That, that was bothering me. But, um, so Policy 2670 says we have a business account, Business Advisory Council, and I didn't know if that was a good one for the board to be on. Um, we had 2650 liaison with School Boards Association, so that would go back to our Legislative Services one. And, um, I, I put 2660 and 2342 out there for discussion because the, um, 2660 we're going to be talking about later today and, um, that it talks about how we get appointed to outside committees, so that was important to the whole list we just did. And then 2342 was how we vote, and that was, to me, is directly related to 2660 because that, the only thing we real, the, that we really need to have a specific voting, um, procedure is, is for the Cape Fear Board of Trustees. So that's why they were there, um, not meant to discuss everyone. I really thought we had an hour, so I'm, I apologize. But if you just send us stuff, we'll get it out, we'll get it organized.
Okay, but I would like to have all this done in public, not just in the policy committee, so that everybody hears what it is, that we, uh, are requesting and changing if we are going to change this policy publicly and before it goes to committee.
Well, the, the policy committee is public and then, and people watch it.
No, I'm talking about all of this, this is the best, this is the best format for the public to hear what's going on.
So, yeah, but if you could just send us.
If you could send it to us in the meantime, then we can have something that we can all look at and the public can look at and weigh in on as well. We have to start somewhere.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree. I'm just saying that.
So just email me all, I mean, I'm, was jotting down suggestions as fast as you were saying them, but if, if you want to just send them again, so we make sure that we get them incorporated.
Right, and I just want to make sure that there's certain things that we definitely need to be talking about outside of just the policy committee, but here as a group.
So we will plan to have this, Ms. Bowie, if we can put this as a work session for the September regular meeting, board meeting, uh, for continuation of discussion. I would like to thank Ms. Crable for taking the lead on this and, um, you know, getting us organized with these policies. Thank you, board members, for your suggestions and input, and I look forward to a more structured committee process, uh, coming into 2122. All right.
Well done, Ms. Crable.
What?
All right.
Oh, thank you. I thought you said, I thought you said, "Hold on, Ms. Crable," I'm like, what now?
No, no, I said, "Well done."
Thanks, Pete, appreciate it.
So we will go ahead and move into, uh, the regular meeting portion of the evening, and we will begin with our invocation. Uh, so I would like everyone pleased to stand. Our invocation this evening is being, uh, is being presented by Reverend Valerie Robinson of Morris Chapel AME Zion Church, and she will be providing the invocation remotely.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather in this place, I want to first and foremost tell you thank you for who you are and all that you have done. Um, I'm humbly coming before you, not knowing exactly what to pray for, but Lord, you know what needs to be done and you know what needs to be said. We ask that you would be with this, these board members as they handle the business of the school. Let it be a productive session, touch those who are, uh, under the sound of my voice, the children, the parents, staff, Lord, we, we pray for them. We pray for a successful school year, though the pandemic still rages around us. Lord, you are bigger than a pandemic, and we put our trust in you. Have your way in this meeting. This is your humble servant's prayer. Amen.
All right, uh, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I would like to make a note, uh, thank you to Reverend Robinson also, who is an employee at Johnson Creek Case Center, who's getting ready to welcome back our youngest students, uh, also on Monday. So thank you, Reverend Robinson, for taking the time, uh, to share your invocation this evening. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Who to approve the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add a section in, um, right before announcements or, um, so that, um, I have a, a board member, um, update or report or comment that I would like to make, and I didn't know where else to do that, um, except under announcements.
Could you repeat the last sentence? I'm sorry, I was.
I would like to, um, make a recognition update, um, to the, to the school system, and I didn't know where I was allowed to do that.
If it's, if, if you'd like, I mean, you can speak during correspondence, you're welcome to share whatever comments you have, if you'd like to do that.
Then correspondence is fine, thank you.
Okay, and, and can I, uh, I actually wanted to amend the agenda. I know there was a first and a second before I had a chance to bring that up, but I wanted to add, add an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, um, there is a lot of, uh, input from the public. They would like to, uh, have a different reporting method about the COVID updates. And as a grandparent with kids that live with me, and last spring that was very helpful to know what was going on with the different schools, I think it's a good idea if we could go back to the individual school updating on our website so that the public, which who have been asking for it, and you've seen it in the emails, uh, can, um, better understand what's going on in our schools.
What item are you asking to add, Ms. Justice?
Uh, the, I would like to have the matrix re, re, returned, put back on, uh, our weekly, uh, communications to the public of the different schools.
So the item is to have a discussion regarding the addition of the, putting the matrix back onto accessible areas?
The different schools, the, the students that are, uh, have tested positive and the staff also for COVID, and, uh, yeah, add that back to our weekly communication with the public. That's a discussion and I think possibly an action being taken after we have the discussion.
Is the district prepared to discuss that?
Ms. Adams?
Yes, Mr. Shive.
It's, it's my understanding that we've been noticing these meetings, the interim meetings as special meetings.
Oh, okay, so no amendments.
Right, and therefore, if, everything that we discuss has to fall within the, the meeting notice.
Okay, all right, my, my apologies, yes, this is, sorry, Ms. Justice, it's a, um, if you'd like to put that on for the regular meeting, go ahead and send me an email.
I, I definitely will. Uh, the reason I brought it up is because school starts next week and it's only been the last couple of weeks that the public's been aware and myself aware that this policy or this practice has changed.
Okay, thank you very much.
And especially, especially with what's going on with the case numbers rising, that's why I thought it was pertinent.
Go ahead and send me an email and we will get that on for the September regular meeting.
Certainly will.
All right, uh, so we have a first and a second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor, I believe we can do this as consensus, or since we have one on remote, let's go ahead and let's do, um, roll call.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Crable?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
All right, agenda is approved, six to zero. All right, next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318 dot 11, A1, 3, and 6, to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 115C dash 319 and dash 321, to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C., 1232G, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including in the case captioned John Doe v. New Hanover County Board of Education, ed. al., New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 19 dash CVS dash 2745. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I got three of them, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we'll go closest, Mr. Bullier, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Any discussion?
Both.
All right, uh, Ms. Bowie, if you could call the roll, please?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Motion passes, we are in closed session. Thank you very much.
The room, masks are required, so if you please have them with you, please make sure they are up tightly over your nose and mouth. Thank you. Okay? All right, welcome back. Thank you very much. The board has returned from closed session. We will continue with our agenda. Our next item is the approval of the minutes for the June special board meeting on June 22nd, the July special board meeting July 6th, and the August special board meeting on, sorry, August 6th. So do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Craybill.
Yes.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, six to zero. Moving along, our next item on the agenda are consensus items, and do I hear a motion to approve the consensus items as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to approve those items under consensus.
Thank you. Mr. Bowyer, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to pull one, please.
Yes, Ms. Justice?
Okay, um, give me a second. Okay. Sorry about this, it's taking me just a second here. I would like to pull the one about the MO, the agreement, MOU agreement with the Sheriff's Department, or SROs.
So you would like to vote on that separately?
I would like to have a discussion and vote on it separately.
All right, Mr. Shive, if we are pulling an item from consensus, is that allowable for a special meeting? To discuss it pulled out?
Yes, that's okay.
Thank you. All right, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to also pull out the contract for the school mental health.
All right.
Because I have a question that I needed to ask, and I couldn't get it asked before the meeting.
Okay, so we are pulling the contract for mental health and the MOU for law enforcement, so the.
Madam Chair, can we vote on those separately? Or can we ask for a motion separately? Can we ask for two, it would be two motions.
Concerning what?
Would the amendment be to pull the contract for school-based mental health and memorandum of understanding with law enforcement for a separate vote?
Are we, are we to vote? So if you, you have to vote when you pull? It's a requirement?
Any member.
If you ask to pull, then you do discuss.
Right, Ms., that's correct, Ms. Justice. Any member of the board can, can ask to have an item pulled off of consensus.
So we are voting on the TESR's audit and the personnel report only right now in consensus. All right, okay, any discussion? All right, so the motion is to approve the TESR's audit and the personnel report from consensus. Ms. Bowie, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Craybill.
Aye.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's go back to the, Ms. Craybill, you have a question for the school-based mental health?
Yes. Make the motion to pull that one out.
Oh, to pull it out completely?
Well, no, not to pull it out. Pull it out if I have a question I want to ask, and however I do that, that's the motion I want to make.
No, you don't, it's already pulled. You can ask your question now.
Oh, Nelson just said we had to vote on things separately.
We voted on the TESR's audit and the personnel report, so before we go to make a motion to approve that item, you've got a question that you said you wanted to ask.
Okay, I voted on the wrong thing, but I'm good with it. So I thought we were having to pull them each out separately. All right, so my question to you, Ms. Barnum, about the, the mental health contract is, it's a simple one. When I was reading through it, it said that counseling therapy sessions would occur during the school day with, with students and families, and so, during, well, during health department operating hours. So I didn't know how that would interfere with student instruction time.
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. The benefit of school-based mental health services is that it's a better time for students to be able to have their needs met while, without having to leave the school, travel to an appointment, that kind of thing. Plus, the staff being a part of the school staff, they can collaborate with the instructional staff to determine a time to come out of classroom where they're not going to get behind, but they're also going to have their counseling and mental health needs met.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so can we go forward to approve that one first? All right, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for school-based mental health therapists.
All right, is there a second?
I'd like to say.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Any other discussion? Ms. Bowie, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Craybill.
Aye.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Aye.
Contract is approved. Next item, Ms. Justice, the MOU with law enforcement school resource officer.
Yes, there are several things when I was looking this over. Since we first approved it, I've heard a lot of input from the public, and then things have changed about concerns that I noticed. One of the first things I'll just bring up, I believe it's about the duties of officers in Article Two, I don't have them exactly in front of me, is that the, the SRO officers need to complete the, goodness gracious, sorry about this, I've got everything. Pardon?
The school resource officer program.
Right, when they are approved, the training for intervention, crisis intervention training, that's what I was trying to do in my scribbles, doesn't have to take place until after they are hired, and I would like, see, things like this, I think that that is not a good idea, having worked in schools with kids that are in crisis, that any officer that's on campus that's an SRO needs to be trained in that, because that's an alternative that will, for so many reasons, will help in a crisis situation, what happens very often with our children. So that's one thing that I would like to be stated in there, that they have to be trained before they are in that position, not after they're in that position. Once they're on campus, something can come up immediately. If they're not trained, it could be a bad situation. Also, the assignments, I am, I would like to have a discussion about the difference between the need for SROs in elementary schools and middle and high schools. The MOA, MOU doesn't have that particular concern in there. I'm concerned, having worked in all three levels of the schools, that SROs in elementary schools, and I have been educated about this, I honestly did not realize that the trauma an SRO can cause in elementary schools with a lot of our kids, just walking through the building because of the, their home lives and situations and other things, and so I think we need to have a discussion on this. I know from working in middle and high schools, the size of the population, when you have anywhere from maybe a thousand to two thousand, it makes sense to have a SRO in there in order, just like you would in a small town. You know, there's somebody in the neighborhood, but it's a big, big difference for very impressionable young elementary school kids. That's one thing I'd also like to discuss about that. Another thing is, we now know because of the public, and thank you, public, that there is some conflict and some concern, they have changed the MOU, by the way, thank you for doing that, to now reflect that there is statutes that protect juveniles when they are being interviewed, or I'll say interviewed, by law enforcement. But there's also a lot of psychological information out there that hasn't been considered about the way, say, for example, a child is allowed to have their Miranda rights, and if, even if their parent can't be there, they're relocated. A child is a lot more susceptible to agreeing to an interview and actually pushing their Miranda rights away because of their age and immaturity. These are the kinds of things, I would like to have a further discussion, not necessarily at this point, about what this encompasses when you look at the MOU, because we're talking about children, and we're talking about different and variety of settings, and I'm very adamant about the crisis intervention training, having been part, because I did work in an environment with, with children that, that all the staff had to do that because the children were in pretty crisis situations, it was a special school, that that is something that we definitely need to have in our SROs before they even step, step on campus.
Ms. Justice, were you at the policy committee meeting when, that they discussed this last week?
I have heard about it, and I've heard, watched parts of it, but the point is that we are the board, and we're the ones that make the decisions on this.
But if you had, if you had issues with this, that would have been a really good time to bring it forward and have the conversation with Judge Corpenning and your policy committee members.
George Corpenning wasn't there.
To bring them forward.
Yes, he was.
Yes, he was.
When did he show up?
Yes, Mr. McManus.
For the sake of all of us and everybody listening, could you read it, and then we can discuss it?
Yeah.
Make sure everybody, read the most updated.
Okay, sure, I want to clarify that the MOU document itself is the same as it was last year, when, in its first year, except for the added citation that basically adds the general statute or the criminal code at the request of the sheriff's office as a clarification to the language surrounding investigations and interrogations. So nothing was changed in that, because it already met, it met the language of the statute, the citation wasn't included, and so the citation is now included, which is the only change to that. And, and I do want to speak briefly about the elementary SRO program. That is based on a grant from the Department of Public Safety, and elementary SROs are placed in the elementary schools as a protection to the students, not to monitor or support behavior or disciplinary matters. And so that is a very different kind of program. Our middle and high school SROs have longstanding, as this aligns, are to be in addition to the administrative staff to provide security in the building, and then also to respond should there be an unsafe situation. But the, the main goal for elementary is to be there to protect that environment, and if you'll recall, that is a grant opportunity that came about after Sandy Hook.
Okay, and there, that is, that's a very good point, but there's also the possibility that, you know, they can be not in the building, but around the building, I mean, just as safe, your location immediately if you need, need help, so that's my concern is, I was not aware, I was not aware until I talked to community members, the negative impact this has on some of our schools with the SROs in there. I'm sorry, this is the reality.
Then at that point, if it's a negative impact and it's information you want to share, then the proper protocol would be to bring that to the superintendent, and so him and his staff can talk through this and work through this.
Good, do that.
So that's, but that's, there are other ways, pick up the phone and have that conversation with him, rather than dropping it at a meeting when we're about to vote on an MOU. That would be the proper protocol.
This was only recently brought to my attention, and this is, to do this in public is very important, so the public can understand what it is that my concern and the public, other members of the public concerns are, not just picking up a phone.
But blindsiding with comments and concerns is not helpful to our students, because the board, the administration is not prepared to have these conversations right now.
Well, let's have this the next time.
So if you would like to have this conversation, but at this point, we have an MOU, school is starting on Monday.
Well, you can carry it over and to the previous one and have this discussion during our next meeting.
It doesn't just work like we just do it, and then we don't do it. People can't function that way. You can't govern from the dais. It takes more than that, and I move to adopt the MOU. Excuse me, the discussions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McManus.
But I'd like to say something.
Yes, discussion.
I have found arrogantly, I have more experience with SROs than probably everybody in this room, but maybe one of our guests tonight seated there, and I can tell you from the very beginning of placing SROs to the present, they have become, in my experience and with everyone that I've talked to, they relate with the students. Students tell them, they tell no one else. Their training, that's a good discussion, but I don't think they should have to take the training until they know they're going to be an SRO officer. I think that in elementary school, the opposite is true. I think they establish the relationships, the trust, the camaraderie. I think that they are well-placed. I think they do an excellent job, and I can tell you, as a high school arena and junior high, all middle but sixth, you can't do it without them. They are, they are so special in the school personality, the discipline, but the respect, and I think the opposite. I think that they add credibility to any leadership in a school.
A lot of what you say is so true, so true, and I believed that myself until I recently talked to community members. It's like a paradigm shift, understanding actually from the community members' perspective of these kids.
I encourage you to share that information you're receiving with our superintendent. All right, I'd like to call the vote.
Can I just add one more, to get to the training, Ms. Barnum, the, correct me if I'm wrong, in the, the paragraph number one, it talks about the training, and it says that the SRO, if they already don't have it, they will have it at the next available session and within the year. So they're not, it's my understanding, they're not thrown out there just like, hey, why don't you be an SRO today?
Right.
You know, so there, there is a plan. That is what, that's what this reads to me, and that's my understanding of what has been happening.
Yes, so I'm so thankful that I have my, my partner here, Lieutenant Smith, who can speak to that.
Lieutenant Smith?
Yes.
We're used to seeing you at the back of the room, but welcome to the microphone.
Yes, well, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Faust, school board members, and thank you for the opportunity to come and maybe answer some, some of these questions from the sheriff's office perspective. I bring you greetings from Sheriff at Man and Chief's service, who are not able to be here tonight. But yes, so the, the crisis intervention team program, you know, it is one that, well, actually, let's, let's take a step back, and first, let's talk about basic SRO training. So it is regulation by sheriffs training and standards, as well as law enforcement training and standards, which governs your police departments, that any law enforcement officer that's filling the billet of a school resource officer, and there are certain parameters in that definition of how many hours per week. in that definition of how many hours per week, how many weeks per year, but effectively all forty-five of your full-time school resource officers here in New Hanover County, forty-nine, including our four partners from the Wilmington Police Department, all are required to go through the forty-hour basic SRO course, either, either prior to being assigned as an SRO or within the first year of being placed as an SRO. And the reason for that is simple logistics. You know, during the school year, when we are fulfilling our, our role as school resource officers, you know, the deputies and the police officers are in the schools doing their job. Typically speaking, we will, we will run the basic SRO schools or send our personnel to basic SRO schools during the summertime, or sometimes over the, over the holiday break, halfway between the school year. So, you know, again, that is based off of a, a rule for the sheriff's education and training standards, which all sheriff's offices in the state have to abide by. So yes, everybody that works in New Hanover County schools as a school resource officer has, has, has gone through that basic SRO course, either prior to being assigned or within the first year of being assigned as an SRO. And again, the reason for that leeway is the logistics of being able to go through that course. In terms of crisis intervention, that is essentially a supplementary course that we, you know, that we put our, not only SROs, but law enforcement officers through. There is a portion of the basic SRO course, however, that, that educates the, the SROs in dealing with students and populations, you know, that, that may be living with a cognitive impairment, maybe living with, you know, some other issue that the, the school resource officer may encounter. So that's sort of the, the basic. So the idea that, you know, we're going in with, with no training is, is, you know, not quite the case. Also, the sheriff's office has adopted mental health first aid. All right, so all of our personnel, you know, that come on as deputy sheriffs, no matter where they're working in the sheriff's office, the sheriff has, has dedicated, you know, training to mental health first aid, which is an eight-hour class. So the CIT program is used really as a, as a, as a supplement to that. So the CIT course is forty hours. It is specific to, you know, teaching law enforcement officers how to respond to certain calls for service as it relates to mental health and substance abuse. It's sharpening skills that they already possess, but then also connecting them with community resources that, you know, they, they may not be aware of, or just making sure that they know what is the right entity to call, and especially in the school setting, making sure that we know in terms of school staff and our other partners, with social workers, counselors, everybody, you know, in that side of the house, making sure that, you know, we know the situations where we can, you know, where we should be referring students to them. So again, logistically, you know, mandating that that take place, you know, before a, a law enforcement officer is put into an SRO billet, you know, there, there's some feasibility issues there. Here in, in New Hanover County, we utilize Trillium Health Resources as the entity that puts on crisis intervention team training. You know, within the last year, there have not been that many classes because of COVID protocols and things of that nature. But in a normal year, we usually have anywhere from two to four classes in New Hanover County, and that's not specific to school resource officers, though, that's, that's law enforcement from all over the area. So again, you know, the, the logistics, you know, behind having that, or, you know, is where, you know, in terms of the MOU, the, the decision has to be made, you know, are we going to, you know, say, create a, create a logistical issue for personnel by saying you have to do this before you go in? And again, I, I can't stand here and say that only the sheriff can. So I'm just providing information in terms of how logistically it works. So, I mean, you have any other questions specific to the CIT training?
So how many, so you saying that you possibly can't answer right now, logistically, how many SROs return each year and have already had the training, as opposed to new hire or new people brought into the program, that would start in a building without the training, they got a year to do it? Do you know what the different, the amount of, how many there would be, and especially in, in general?
Right, and, and, and no, I, I can't stand here and answer that specific question. It's actually one of the things that we're looking at now in the spin-up to school. The sheriff has dedicated himself, and we've done this for, for many years now, to have, you know, all of our SRO officers trained in CIT. I can't stand here and tell you tonight that they, they're a hundred percent are, because I know they're not, we have new SROs that are coming on board.
You don't have the figures?
But it's, but it's an objective to, you know, to have that, and, you know, as indicated on the uniform by the CIT pin that's worn just above, above the name tag. So, you know, I, I, no, I don't, I wasn't prepared with those numbers tonight, but I can certainly get that answer to you.
Please, please.
Lieutenant Smith, I want to say thank you very much for coming up here in this impromptu presentation. What I would suggest, if any board members have questions regarding the SRO program, to please send them to Dr. Faust. He will make sure that the information gets provided to the board members expediently.
Can I ask Dr. Faust something, then? Dr. Faust, it's, it's obvious that this is not a simple situation, and I'm also concerned about the, this is not about the CIE intervention. What I'm concerned about also is the psychological effects of the questioning of students. This is, in other words, there's a three-part things that I just asked, that obviously tonight, we're not prepared, and if you say I was blindsiding, it's because I, I have had a lot more people in the last couple of weeks bring me concerns I wasn't aware of, okay? So is, is it possible for you to get this, for us to, in the future, go ahead and possibly change the MOU, to be more specific, and still go with what we have right now, contract-wise? Does, can we change the contract, say, in a month or two, if we decide during a board meeting that we hear information that would fulfill these concerns that the public has?
So I'm not sure I understand the question, but I can.
I believe the question, and I believe, Mr. Shive, you may need to weigh in on this. Legally, could the MOU be amended if new information is brought forward or research is shared?
We could, we could request that it be amended, but obviously, that would, you know, we can't amend it unilaterally. We would, you know, need to make that request to the sheriff's department and see if, whatever request we're making are agreed to on their end as well.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that.
All right, we have a first and a second. To approve the MOU with the law enforcement school resource officers, thank you, Ms. Barnum, thank you, Lieutenant Smith. Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
MOU is approved, five to one. Thank you very much. Moving on into new business, I'm sorry, I just skipped completely by the old business. All right, let's go to old business first, apologize. Mary Hazel Small, we'll welcome you to the microphone, and this item is the 2021-22 State Budget Update.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here tonight to, to talk to you about the progress that's being made towards the state budget. We've been waiting a couple of years now. The, the second slide, let's see, let me get here. There we go. So in June, the Senate approved their version of the budget, and last week, the House approved theirs. The next step in the process is conference negotiations, and so what I'm going to do tonight is talk through the differences in the two that relate to a few items that I think will be of interest to you. I will mention that, that the House substitute bill is six hundred and seventy-one pages long, so I could be up here all night, but I won't. I'm going to leave it to just a few slides. The format of the presentation is I have, for each topic, the major components of the Senate and the House, for your, so you can compare, and then when they agree, I'm going to show it in green, so, you know, across, across the page. So the first few slides, there's still differences. The first topic is premium bonus pay. So the, the federal funds that were received by the state that are in the state fiscal recovery fund is being used to, to fund lots of things, but including premium, premium bonus pay for all full-time employees. The, the amounts vary between the two versions. The Senate has a thousand-dollar bonus for full-time employees, regardless of funding source. It increases to fifteen hundred for those who have an annual salary of, of seventy-five thousand or less. The House version starts lower, starts at five hundred, also has a requirement that they be employed for the entire time from March tenth, the beginning of pandemic of two thousand twenty, through October first of twenty-one, and usually bonuses are paid at the end of October. So, but then they go, they increase to fifteen hundred at the same point of seventy-five thousand or less in terms of salary, and with an additional five hundred for those who earn less than forty thousand, and in both of those cases, you know, principals, regardless of salary, would, would receive those amounts. Neither of these are subject to retirement, meaning the employee, we don't contribute our share, the employee doesn't have to put in their six percent, but it doesn't count towards retirement income. So that is the summary of the bonuses. Next, I want to talk about teachers and instructional support, and here we're talking about certified pay, the state certified salary schedules. So in the Senate version, there is a quarter percent increase in the steps, also an approved step increase. So what, if there's a difference between step one and two, the teacher would get, you know, the higher step, as well as the experience credit. The, the step increases vary from point three percent to four point three percent, depending on the step. The largest increase, let's see, the largest increase for those moving to step twenty-four to twenty-five, which is currently the top of the state scale, the twenty-fifth step is the top. The House is significantly larger and also addresses a lot of the things we've been hoping for since two thousand thirteen, when some of these things went away. So first, it increases, right now, the teacher salary scale, when you get to step sixteen, you're frozen until you get that step at twenty-five. So those ten steps are frozen. So this reintroduces steps all the way up to twenty-five, I mean, their steps are there, but increases at each step up to twenty-five, and increases the top of the new schedule from, I can't remember what it is right now, I think it's, I should know this, I think it's fifty-two thousand, but I'm guessing, up to fifty-five thousand five hundred. The increases vary from one percent to eleven percent, with an average of four point two percent. The other thing that happens is that the master's pay is reinstated. Currently, you only receive master's pay if a master's is required for the license you hold in the job you're in. But we used to pay an additional ten percent of salary, the salary scale was ten percent higher for those with a master's pay, and this would be introduced, reintroduced back to that, as well as advanced degree and doctoral supplements that, that would be in addition to that. There's also an additional hundred-dollar supplement paid for everybody on the psychologist, speech-language pathologist, and audiologist schedule, as well as school counselors would receive an additional hundred a month. So that's the teacher pay scale. Next is school administrators. So I'm going to first compare assistant principals. Assistant principals pay scale is based on the teacher scale, and it's currently nineteen percent higher. It stays the same in the Senate, but of course, you'd get the increase that would be in the teacher scale for the House, there'd be a step increase plus, plus the higher scale. The House increases that differential between the teacher scale and the assistant principal scale to twenty-two percent, which is something we've been hoping for, for a while, because that, that means that there's not a possibility that you make more as a teacher with national boards and, and masters, you know, that you would as an assistant principal, so. Let's see, so that's, that's APs for principals. Principals are not paid on steps, they are paid based on the size of the school. It's a, like a, there's six steps, but it's based on how many students are at the school. So it's not a step increase. That scale would increase by one and a half percent for principals on the Senate scale, and for the House, it's one percent. There's no, no performance bonus, which is based on the performance at that school, but there are additional bonuses for, for principals that I'll discuss in a minute. So this shows the certified bonuses that are agreed upon right now in the Senate and the House, which is an eighteen-hundred-dollar bonus for state-paid principals, and all principals are state-paid, so that's all principals. And then a three-hundred-dollar bonus for all state-paid teachers and instructional support employed as of ten one twenty-one. This is the same thing that the state did last year for teachers, because without some of the data, they, they, they did not pay performance bonuses in this past year at grades, for grades three through eight, reading and math, nor is that expected to continue in the new year. There will be performance bonuses, as there were this year, for AP, IB, I didn't even know what this was, AICE, which is the Cambridge, we don't have that, but it's a similar program to IB, and CTE funded up to thirty-five hundred. So they, the bonuses are based on how the students score on the test, and so they could be up to thirty-five hundred. Okay, so that's certified. Next, we have, on the same slide, I've got non-certified, which is our classified employees, and then our central office administrator. So starting with the classified, which are our local pay schedules within state ranges, the Senate is increasing one and a half percent, the House, two and a half percent, but both are also agreeing on increasing a minimum wage to thirteen dollars an hour, and so the increase would be whatever it took to get to thirteen, which may be much more than one and a half or, or two and a half percent, but those above it, that, that's how much the, the state ranges would increase. Certainly, you know, we have discussed the fact that locally, you can do more with, within the ranges that state provides, and we will be talking, once we know where they fall out, we'll be bringing these pay scales back to you for consideration. I would love to say at the September meeting, but we'll just see how quickly this timeline goes. The House is also considering increasing the minimum to fifteen dollars the next year. So what, what we were looking at was trying to do a fourteen-dollar minimum, you know, this, the next year, or this coming year, the year we're in, I'm struggling, sorry. It's, it's always difficult when we don't do budgets ahead of time, so I forget what year I'm living in. Central office administrators, the Senate's looking at a one and a half percent increase, and the House, a one percent increase. Most of the central office administrators are paid locally, the state gives us very little funding for that, and it's also a local pay scale that, once the, the state budget's finalized, we will bring to you for approval. For benefits, our current budget that you approved in July was based on the Senate benefit rates, which is the retirement contribution of twenty-two point twenty-seven percent, and so for every salary dollar, the board contributes twenty-two point twenty-seven percent towards the retirement system, and then health insurance is seven thousand and forty-six dollars per employee that qualifies. And then for the House, the retirement contribution is a little bit more, and the, the health insurance, a little bit less. The other new provision that relates to benefits in the House budget is new paid rental leave, which we've never seen before, which is exciting, and that provides up to eight weeks for employees given birth, and four weeks for employees who become a parent. And so if someone was on leave, they would not have to use their sick leave during that time. A few other items in, in the budget of interest that don't relate to salaries, I wanted to bring to your attention, and we've talked about ADM a lot in our budget planning, so the ADM reserve is, well, let me back up a little bit. You'll recall that the normal process for the budget is that the, once, that the state allot's based on projected ADM, and then they will reduce our allotment if that number of students doesn't, doesn't show up. The Senate has an ADM reserve, so they won't have to reduce it, as, which is the same process that was used last year. They also have a reserve for children with disabilities. Normally, we, the funding is based on our April headcount, and if more students show up, or, or less students, they, they may reduce our funding mid-year, and so this is a reserve to keep that from happening. The House combines them both, so it's addressed in the House budget, it's just done differently with one provision. So both would be a good situation where we would, I guess, not lose any funding in the Senate, the House, the, the funding loss should be minimal. And then the other thing in the House, you may recall, class size reduction that we implemented fully this year, and the way the state funded that was they allotted the K-five enhancement, the art, music, and PE positions separately. For us, the state paid for most of the positions, but not all, that we, we allot to schools, and that was based on a formula of, for every hundred and ninety-one students, we got one position. Sometimes you have schools that are smaller than that, and we have more positions, and so that's why we pick up a few locally. They are reducing that formula to one to one forty in the House, but also making it K-twelve, which would be additional enhancement positions for secondary schools, which would be great. What is agreed upon of miscellaneous nature is the, last year, the state funded for the first time, the, the grant for CTEC. Each of the approved operative innovative high schools receives a grant, but because of the budget stall, they, they funded that with one-time funding, this moves it to continuation funding, so they would get that every year, which is great, as, as Wex and I bet do. Also, there's the needs-based capital funding, there's lots of changes to that, that I could do a whole presentation, and I won't, but one of the specific things that's listed, there are four schools that are listed with specific provisions to get funding, and that includes four million for CTEC, which is great. includes four million for CTEC, which is great. The, both provisions also have quite a bit of of money allotted for, from the the state S R three reserve. So we've received our S R three allotment, but the state helped back part of it to distribute during this budget process. The senate has seventeen programs they're looking at, the House has thirty-four. We can provide more information for if you're interested, but the three that they agree on are after-school grants, K-three learning management system, and summer program grants, similar to what we had this summer. So that is it. Hope hope to bring back a presentation next month that would include salary schedules, but if not, as soon as they approve it, we'll be back to bring that for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Small. Anyone have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So the, this really has nothing to do with the budget that we've already approved, right? Like where the IRS supplement for lead teachers is gone, and that kind of, or any of the, any of the...
Those are local budget decisions, and so anything that the board approves locally, that that is still in place. This is just the state budget, what they're going to fund.
Okay.
And, but the changes we made to our supplement schedule, you know, those were all always locally paid and not addressed in state budget, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. And then, so the after-school grants, does, is, that is something that we think we're going to, we're going to get more money from that, or is this, is this in addition to the money that county commissioners gave us?
So we we prioritized in our S R three, some after-school programs for after-school care. We also wanted to have, the commissioners wanted to provide transportation, so some of our after-school activities, not daycare, but tutoring and those things that happen after school, that every every child could participate in, and so they, their, their federal funds were used to give us the the one point two million dollar grant to cover that transportation for two years. So this is more on the after-school care side, which is what we put in our S R grant, so there's a, can't speak to what what the board might decide to do, but if this is funded through the state's program, we might be able to repurpose our S R three dollars to do something else, which would be great.
Like that would mean to, like, pay salaries of after-school care people?
So that that's already in the S R three, S R two or three, probably both of them budgets that you approved back in May.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, Small, I had, I was looking at the retirement contributions from the House and the senate, are they in line with what we were anticipating, or are we going to have to make some adjustments on our end?
So we we made, we made our our final budget proposal that you approved in July based on the senate budget, because that was the best information we had at the time. With with the House version, it would cost us about three hundred thousand more in local funds, a little bit less than that, because the health insurance change goes into effect January, but we, you know, we'll wait and see if they come out somewhere in between, you know, it should not be, the most it could be is three hundred thousand more.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
When you were talking about the cooperative innovation continuation money, innovation high schools, you know, you mentioned CTEC, and you mentioned WEX, but we didn't mention Isaac Bear anywhere, is that included?
Did I say the same thing twice? So so WEX and Isaac Bear had always been, were funded previously with continuation funds. CTEC got a new grant last year, and it was with one-time funds, and so so last year and this year, it was one-time funding, just on these mini bills, so this makes it permanent funding.
Okay.
So it's not, we do have it this year, but there was a fear that would go away, and so this makes it continuation.
And do you have any hope, is there any prospect of a compromise? Because in some cases, the House and the senate are like way apart, I mean, is there like any any talks in your chief financial officer world of this, like, actually coming together as a compromise somewhere?
We had a state call today with the the finance, school business leader, and and what she was hearing, you know, is hope, and it's hope, not not a sure thing, that the goal is for them to compromise before Labor Day. That would make us all very happy. It could take longer, it just depends, you know, as they get started on the process, if they, if there's a real sticking point, it could take longer. But if they have already been discussing throughout this whole time, and they're, they may already be more in agreement than we know, we just don't know until they start that conference process, so.
We appreciate that, and we hope that it's September meeting, maybe it will be the meeting where we have a budget. We appreciate everything you've shared with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, under old business is policy sixty-four thirty-five employee dress code, and Dr. Faust, I'm going to turn this one over to you to explain the why of sixty-four twenty-five.
So in last year, or a couple of months ago, which would have been last year, I'd asked for a change in the policy, and the board granted it, but that was a temporary change for schools to be able to wear spirit wear on Fridays and with jeans, spirit wear meaning school shirt and then jeans, and then on Wednesdays, wearing college t-shirts, but it had to be college and jeans. And so we're asking that we put it in the policy, that it continues throughout.
Forever.
Yeah.
To make it official. All right, I hear a so moved by Mr. McManus, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. I actually heard a couple of seconds coming through. All right, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Faust, this has been something that your employees in the school, they they really do appreciate it, and I do as well, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Craybill.
Yes.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Yes.
These days are permanent, thank you very much, Dr. Faust. All right, next item on the agenda is policy twenty-three thirty, board meeting agenda, and I am going to hand this to Policy Chair, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very simply, we had to, we had, you know, we just did our policy update with this, with this specific policy, twenty-three thirty, and we just had to go back in, we took out a closed session, we had to add that back in. So I would just ask for a motion to approve the adopted policy.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Craybill, is there a second?
Um.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr, discussion?
Yes, I wanted to have a discussion on parts of this policy. Well, I would like to have a discussion, because I know that the public, here we go again, the public has expressed some concerns about parts of the policy, and not only that, let me see, we need to have some things on there that aren't listed now that I think that would be good, ongoing in the future, situations like looking at the agenda review, adding a couple of things to that, and, yeah, and basically, a part about when we get our information released five days before, the meeting itself, that the public also has an opportunity to get it within twenty-four hours.
Okay, I thank you, Ms. Justice, I would encourage you to send those suggestions to the policy committee, or put it on as an agenda item for discussion for the next meeting with a second. All right, Ms. Bowie, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
No.
Ms. Craybill.
Yes.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Aye.
All right, policy twenty-three thirty is approved as revised, five to one. All right, next item on the agenda, moving into new business, are legal services. As you know, the board had a discussion, I believe, two meetings ago, to review our current legal services, and decided to, we wanted to put an RFP out to see what our options are. Dr. Faust, could you please give us a update on where we are in that process, please?
Yes, so in the, those two meetings, or one meeting ago, when it was happening, we didn't get a clarity on when we wanted the RFP out there. So what we've done is look to see what we need as a district, so, and then open that up for discussion. So some of the areas that we would need legal support in, or that we do need legal support in, is special education, threatened litigation, litigation, construction, real estate, discipline, student discipline, board meetings, board consultation, contracts, personnel, policies, training, public records requests, bonds and fortuitous, fines, federal-state legislation, legislature, and other legal matters. So that that's, our P, RFP will be in that area, of those are the things, needs that we need. Are there any other areas that the board believes that we need?
Did we need something in there about insurance help, or does that fall under litigation somehow?
I mean, we can, but I think it possibly would fall under litigation, but I'm looking at...
Is is Mr. Shive, can he maybe weigh in on that?
Is that a typical, Mr. Shive, is insurance something that falls under a typical educational attorney skill set? Is that included?
I mean, I don't know if you would want to separately have, I don't know if it would be necessary to hire someone to be, you know, on contract continually to provide you insurance coverage counsel. I think that's something that that you can, you can seek someone to fill that role from the time to time that does come up, but hopefully that won't be arising so often that you'll need to have somebody continually under contract for that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
Ms. Justice.
Yes, I'm looking at this, and what I see is a legal services team. Could you give us a description of what you mean by that? Like, right now, we are contracting with Therrington Smith, they have a whole group of people that works with that firm, but there's other permutations here in the state, in fact, across the country, where legal services are provided to school districts in various forms. Have you looked into the other variety of forms besides, say, a, a legal, one legal service company?
Well, if they're all-inclusive, and they can meet the needs of the RFP, then yes, but I never stated a legal team, that just happens to be, my understanding is, even when we had an in-house counsel, we still used outside counsel to support us, because we weren't able to support ourselves with just the legal understanding, the knowledge that we had. So we have always reached outside to get the specificities.
Okay, that's your experience, now, there's other...
No, I'm saying that that was this district's.
This district's, correct.
Yes.
But I'm saying that across the state and across this country, there's other formats or forms of legal services, and have you looked into those besides bringing in a law firm, but individuals for certain areas that are specialists that you can call on if you need to?
So I've worked in four different areas, and in there, some have had general counsel that supported, however, every time where they've had general counsel, they still had to reach outside to provide that. I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question.
I'm saying, have you looked at other forms besides having, this is a very, there's a lot of different formats for this.
Can you provide some examples, Ms. Justice, that may help the conversation?
Oh, yes, certain districts don't have an in-house counsel, but they have people on staff that are, that work with legal services, and know that when they have certain needs, they can call on certain, either people locally, statewide, or whatever, or, you know, for those needs, and they don't have to be part of a firm, it's a list of people that they work with regularly, and they're specialists.
That I'm not familiar with.
But that is, that does happen a lot.
I'm just saying, but asking someone legal advice, and they don't have legal...
Credentials.
Credentials that support that.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying, certain areas, like there's specialists that work with EC, I use EC, I know that that was one thing that was helpful for Mr. Boyer, because they went to him, you know, because there is so much to go, to know about that area, but there's also specialist legal firm, or legal people, individuals that are specialists in that, which you do is have, and this is just one of many forms of doing this, you have a list, people that specialize in areas, when you have the need, then you, and usually you do it because you're familiar with them. Instead of a whole firm that's got everybody under their head, you have different individuals that specialize, say, in EC, specialize in, say, maybe insurance, well, that's pretty broad, situations like lawsuits involving, say, some kind of injury on the job. Instead of having a firm that you're paying a certain amount of money to on a regular basis, what you do is you hire people per need that you have a list of them, and that happens across the state and across the country. We don't, a lot of the districts don't work with individual firms that they have under contract that they pay, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's a definite idea to look into, but we have to look at the cost-benefit analysis, though. What is going to cost the district more at the end of the day? Is it, and so I think that'll be part of this RFP, with cost of, you know, legal services.
Well, as I was, the question would be, would you want to be back in the same boat that we're in now, under the legal...
I'm not sure what boat you're referring to.
If we don't have the support that we need, and we have individuals who are, we call specialists in their area, but they don't have a legal context, that they are interpreting the law, and they're saying, I can't operate an organization that way. I don't want us to be in legal trouble by getting someone's expert opinion, but it's not a legal opinion. They're two different things. So, yes, they sometimes join at the hip, but we've got to have legal support when we're doing this. I would consider myself, yes, I know some, I know the, I know how to run a district, I know the school workings, but I don't know all of the the legal syntax that goes along with it.
But that, yes, but that's where you have a list or contacts of people that do, and you're saying you're not sure who you would go to, but there are other districts that do operate in such a way that they don't have a legal firm full-time on contract, but they have experts that they work with on a regular basis, and they do have maybe a legal person on contract that advises them where to go, if he's not a specialist, or she, whichever it might be. What I'm saying is, there's other forms, other permutations of legal services besides going with a large firm and paying a large contract, on, which we're doing right now, and it's not necessarily more effective or cost-saving, have you looked into it, is what I'm asking.
So what I can say to that is that, based on our cost of having an in-house, and what we have now, we've actually, it's equal.
Madam Chair.
But what I will also say is that, this is an RFP, so the RFP goes out, and we determine, as a board, when we want it to go out, but I'm giving categories of what we need as a district. You see it as the needs of the board, so you, the board, at the board meeting, what they need, but there's also some things that go on behind the scenes, that board members are may not always aware of, and how we use, and what we're using individuals for.
That's not what I was referring to.
Not necessarily talking specifically to you, but what I am saying is that, as superintendent of this organization, I have to have this support.
Madam Chair.
Because at the, at the end of the day, I'm on the line.
Well, I know you are.
And so what I'm going to refer, and what I will recommend to you, is what I feel that I need to support this organization in order for it to be a highly effective organization. Now, what the board does with that, that is a decision of the majority. So what I'm saying is, we will produce an RFP, and if there's...
Utilizing those as a guide.
If there's anything else that you'd like to add, we can do that, but I'm making the recommendation on the needs of what I need as your leader of the district.
Yes, Mr. Boyer.
Yeah, just real quick, Ms. Justice, I'm not really sure what you're asking, but maybe if you could put it in writing and send it to the rest of the board, that might help, I think that would be a good way to move forward.
Well, honestly, that's, that's why we have an administrative team to to look at the different formats that go on in other districts, in order to put this RFP out here and broaden it. That's not the job of the board, that's, we have people that get paid quite well, you know, in central office, that, and they can talk, we even have a lawyer on staff that could possibly give us some advice, Jerel, but his area is Title IX, but what I'm saying is, that is something that Dr. Faust is saying he wants to do it this way, and I was just asking if he had looked at other districts that had the different forms, in order for us to get a broad, beside, I really am bothered by having a certain firm, after our experiences, on staff, and others, and other districts having watched them, how they handle their legal services, I'm really bothered by it being limited to this particular form. I think we need to know more, be broader opportunity to bring on our legal services.
But, Ms. Justice, tonight's conversation is simply, these are some of the items that Dr. Faust has identified as necessary for the RFP.
The items are good.
The question is, are there any other things that the board has? If not, they're going to start moving forward with creating it, they just needed some input, and if there is no other input that you would like to share, then we will go ahead and move on. If you do think, if anyone has any other suggestions or things that they need to share in regards to our legal services, please make sure that you reach out to Dr. Faust sooner rather than later, as they're getting ready to move forward with some of this. And I think the goal is having an RFP prepared to release or vote on October, at the October meeting.
Okay, and that actually sounds good, and these are good services. I'm just talking about, I will, I guess I will do the research, though, but there's a lot of information... but there's a lot of information out there that, you know, that, to me, in my opinion, should be looked at more broadly than what we're presented with right now.
And I will stand on this, and I'll say this one. We don't use anyone in our organization who may have a JD for their JD purposes.
No, I know that.
So, we don't use them for any legal advice. We only use our board attorneys, that company, or whoever that, for that legal advice. We do not operate under that, that guise.
I was just making a suggestion.
Thank you very much, Dr. Faust. We look forward to moving forward with this conversation. All right, next up, we are moving into information. And we are very excited to have a student in the house. I'm going to pass, our first item is students, student voices. And I am going to pass this to Mr. McManus to intro for us.
Well, it's indeed my pleasure. On behalf of Ms. Walker, I'm sure she's not watching this, but the time's on. But on behalf of Ms. Walker and myself, I'm the vice chair, and she's the chair. I want to introduce Dr. Casey Smith. She's the multi-tiered systems of academic and behavioral support at Myrtle Grove Middle School. And she is a strong committee member on the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. And she has put forth so much effort. I know you might want to ask her some questions about what's going on. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, guys, for having us here this evening. I know you're excited for this agenda item. I want to just greet Board Chair Adams, Superintendent Faust, all members of the board, and community members who I know are listening. My name is Casey, and I do serve, as Mr. McManus referenced, on the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Board Subcommittee. You all were discussing, discussing missions earlier. The mission of the EDI Committee is to ensure that New Hanover County Schools celebrates our diverse community through growing a sustainable environment that embraces inclusion, provides equitable opportunities, and affirms our humanity. The EDI Committee is made up of community members and employees. And we are really, really excited this evening to be supporting rising Ashley High School student, Isaiah Singleton's presence on your formal agenda. Isaiah is going to be speaking to you briefly about student voice and student involvement and decision-making in our district. As I mentioned, he's a rising senior at Ashley. He runs track and field and is a National Honor Society and Beta Club member. He plans to major in either neuroscience or health management and go to med school to specialize in family medicine or radiology. Isaiah has also shared with me that he really values communication. And he spends the majority of his time at one of his two jobs. I have provided you all a copy, or a couple of visuals as a reference for you on the term, student voice. The visuals you're looking at come from various aspects of the literature around this term. So, I hope you can utilize those as a point of reflection while you listen to his remarks this evening. And the last thing I would say is just simply, not only to our board members, but to community members in New Hanover County who are adults, who are paying attention this evening. I hope that we can reflect on the immense power, privilege, and responsibility that our age as adults carries. We adults all say that we are here for students. So, may we be challenged tonight to ask ourselves if we are doing the hard work of creating space for students? Space not only to listen to them and consult with them, but to really learn from them and have opportunities to co-research and co-construct new possibilities with them. So, Isaiah, the floor is yours.
Welcome, Mr. Singleton.
All right. Well, hey, everybody. My name's Isaiah Singleton, and thank you for being here with me today. So, from life, we all know that it's very difficult to satisfy the needs and the wants of everybody. I mean, we've seen this in the past with political and economic, you know, social scenes. However, this concept still applies to the sector of education. Students in New Hanover County Schools want to be as satisfied as possible with the roles enacted by our higher-ups. And so, with that being said, I'm here to speak on behalf of all New Hanover County School students to explain to you guys why students should be involved in decision-making as it creates an environment of inclusiveness and it also prepares students for the future while increasing engagement-based growth. And so, I'm pretty sure you guys utilize statistics on a daily basis to present any sort of valid data. And for this data to be considered valid, it must come from a sample that is best representative of the population. You know, statisticians do this in many ways with many methods. However, regardless of the method chosen, statisticians need to end up with a representative sample. And now, although our Board of Education does consist of very well-respected and educated individuals, it's very difficult for them to really understand the full effects that decisions have on specific students and their respective schools. So, by creating some sort of student council or committee to collaborate with our higher-ups, we can get many steps closer to creating a representative group of people that can speak for the entirety of the county. And it is also true that each student has their own story and own experience under the New Hanover County School system. Additionally, students come from very different backgrounds, whether that's financially speaking or environmentally speaking. Nonetheless, students can use their differences to bring issues and ideas to the table. And this would then allow us to be able to find a common theme across all of those ideas and tackle a specific idea one, one step at a time, which will allow for an easier approach for a solution and also a faster enforcement process. And so, for example, let's just say, one student feels as if a specific decision will financially affect their education, but another student feels as if a specific decision will affect their just enjoyment in school. Now, in this scenario, the Board of Education probably would have had little to no awareness of these little potential issues. However, this is where our students come in. These students can collaborate with the Board of Education to take in consideration issues with certain decisions that the board was previously unaware of. And this could significantly reduce the amount of unsatisfied students in the county. And so, also, inclusiveness is one of the, is a very important topic that you guys talk about when talking about almost anything. Now, if you go onto the NHCS main website and click the menu tab and select the About Us section, there is a one sentence that represents the mission statement of New Hanover County Schools. And a part of this statement says, "The mission of New Hanover County Schools, in collaboration with our parents and the community, is to strive to provide children with an opportunity for superior education." Now, I'm wondering, who is considered to be a part of this community? I mean, I would definitely assume the students and the individuals that participate in our schools are considered in said community. And so, to adhere to its mission statement, NHCS should consider students as being a part of the community, making them directly involved in specific decisions. And thinking into the future, this could potentially make NHCS more appealing to others as possible future students can see how, can see, can visually see how New Hanover County Schools is considering its students and their opinions, leading to highest satisfaction across the county. We've seen this in many other states and districts, in Maryland, Florida, and also Illinois as well. And they have had a significant growth in student satisfaction across the whole county. And then, the benefits of involving the students directly into decision-making are just not confined to the high school experience. If students are involved in decision-making while they are still in high school, it can prepare them for future leadership roles. Students often go into leadership roles in the future with the lack of knowledge being their largest obstacle. And while it is important for them to learn from their mistakes, why not let them make their mistakes while they're still in their teenage years and while their brains are still developing? It would be very unfortunate for someone to miss out on an opportunity of a lifetime simply because they don't have that experience under their belt. However, once students just get that experience and just see how effective that collaboration is, it gives them the base skills of communication and negotiation, as well as boosts their confidence, all of which are very important qualities of great leaders. And not only would this experience benefit students in the future, it would also allow, it would also increase student, it also increase engagement-based growth within the county as a whole. Now, in their teenage years, students are unfortunately mostly followers, meaning that they succumb easily to peer pressure. But although this situation is not the dictionary definition of peer pressure, the concept still applies to this situation. Once students see how well their peers are doing by influencing decisions, it can kickstart a series of other initiatives that students create themselves. So, in other words, students can use their observations from looking at their peers as motivation to create other enterprises that may need change, such as creating a New Hanover County School cleanup initiative. And this would bring the, the community of NHCS that much more closer together while still improving the experience under the NHCS system, leading to engagement-based growth. So, as I have stated, involving students in decision-making will benefit both the New Hanover County School system and its students. And so, we did go over a good amount of information, so let's just recap. Students should be involved in decision-making because it will create an environment of inclusiveness and it prepares students for future leadership positions while increasing engagement-based growth. So, with that being said, let's, let's make NHCS's mission statement live up to its name and take action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Isaiah. You are going into ninth grade?
Excuse me?
You're going into ninth grade?
I'm going in, uh...
You're sorry, I was like, wait, I'm like, you're a freshman? Wow, all right, that makes a little bit more sense to me now, okay. You have a very bright future ahead of you, young man. Thank you very much for that presentation. Okay, any questions from the board regarding student voices or any comments about Isaiah's presentation? Yes, Mr. Bowler.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. McManus, Ms. Walker, for, for helping with this. I think I've sat here for, I don't know, 180 board meetings. This is the very first time somebody's come up to address the board where I absolutely agree with every single thing they said. You know, I don't know exactly what this looks like yet, but it needs to look like something because we are here for you. And you're absolutely right, we need to see what you see. And we need to hear what you hear when we pass a policy or make a decision about a dress code, or masks, or anything else. We need your voice at the table, and I just want to say thanks. And I hope we can get something done.
Thank you.
Thank you, but again, Dr. Smith is the reason he's here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. No, that is...
There's Dr. Smith everywhere, I guess.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
The young Dr. Smith.
Excuse me, I forgot, I'm sorry, Dr. Smith, too, I'm so sorry.
All right, anything else?
Oh, yes.
Yes, Ms. Justice?
Yeah, obviously, this is a suggestion to have a voice on the board. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I'm not quite sure what form we're going to be doing this, but I would like to see this done as soon as possible. So, I guess it would be Mr. McManus and Ms. Walker's discussion on how to frame this so to bring something to us, so we can start involving our student voices, just like our community voices is a big part of our community, actually. So, Mr. McManus, I'm going to, I'm going to task you and Ms. Walker to do that.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add that the...
We'd do it anyhow, if you didn't.
I know you will.
The, the Title IX Committee also has a new subcommittee that we're working on with the student voice, you know, starting with the survey, you know, to get that rolling. So, yeah, we, I think all the committees that we're working value the student voice and recognize that it's important. So, thanks for being brave enough to stand up there and hone those public speaking skills.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, I think we really do need literally on the board, not just an advisory group, that too, a voice regularly on the board of the students.
So, to the members of the EDI Committee, you know, I'm, was on there when we started. And this conversation has been ongoing for a long time. And I would like to thank Dr. Casey Smith, which, by the way, congratulations to Dr. Casey Smith for earning her doctorate this summer in the midst of a pandemic. It's, that's not easy, well done. We are incredibly lucky to have someone of her caliber in our system. So, thank you, she has really been a driving force for this conversation because student voices like Isaiah, you're right, that's why we're here. And it's important to be able to understand the needs and the desires of what our students are looking for. And, you know, I know our teachers are on the ground and our staff is on the ground, and they share their perspectives, but your perspective can be a little bit different. And that's great, we need all of those different opinions and ideas. So, thank you very much for continuing, you know, to push forward with this. Isaiah, you're standing at a board meeting as, as a senior, almost senior in high school, and that takes a lot of guts. And really appreciate your willingness to do this because I can tell you, you've definitely energized this group to say, let's, let's make this happen. You proved to us, we need more of this. And so, yes, Mr. McManus, Ms. Walker, EDI Committee, yes? You want to come on back up, Dr. Smith?
I just want to make a, like, a point of clarification that Mr. McManus and Ms. Walker can't really make that happen, right? Like, that's kind of the whole idea that whatever it looks like, it could look like that, but it could look like a lot of different things. The idea is that we are making sure that we're engaging with our youth in the development of whatever it looks like that could be sustainable for youth in our district in the long run, so.
Madam Chair.
That's what we need to look at.
Yes.
Could I suggest, and I don't know if this is possible, but maybe we add just an extra 30 minutes at our next board meeting and do board committees. And then, during our work session, have a discussion about, you know, maybe an outline of what that might look like.
And that's what I was saying, Mr. McManus and Ms. Walker, I think already have something in mind they'd like to present to us possibly?
Is there some ongoing conversations with EDI?
Can I say something real fast?
Yes, please.
Back in our last meeting before school ended in May, we did have a, about an hour-long conversation about kind of what the structure of some type of student, you know, committee and council-type thing would like, you know, look like. And then, we all came into an agreeance of kind of, you know, an application process or nomination process, and how many members, and nominating juniors and seniors only. So, we have, I'm just saying, we have talked about that, you know, as students ourselves already. And we do have a great idea about how it should be kind of formatted. But again, we just need to relay that information to you guys, get some feedback. And that's just, just everything is about, basically.
We would love to see that, that mock-up. So, I encourage you to send it to, I guess, actually, why don't you, you can send it to the entire board.
Please.
We would love to see it.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Wildabour, I'm not trying to forget you on there on virtual, do you have any comments?
Well, yeah, absolutely. I think, I think we've all, would be 100% agreement that we're about students. That's what it's all about. It's not about us, it's not about a whole bunch of other things. And I think really, we need to hear from the students. The students need to be active participants in their education. So, I think this is outstanding. Like I say, I would agree with the board, everyone else on the board, that we need to do this sooner than later, move forward on it. I'm just so excited about it.
And Isaiah, before we close this out, what is one piece of advice you would like to give to New Hanover County students as we start back on Monday?
Well, I mean, I've been almost in high school for four years. And one thing I had to learn, you know, by myself was, don't think everything is perfect. You cannot go into high school with a perfectionistic type lifestyle. I know I went into freshman year thinking I was going to get all hundreds in my class, all, you know, hundreds on my tests and stuff, and that's just not realistic. You have to make, make your goals realistic and like tailored to you specifically. And don't try and just, you know, make these outlandish goals that only the 1% can only make. So, just, just stay to you and just don't think that everything needs to be perfect right away. Because like I said, you're still learning, we're still developing. And this is a perfect time to make our mistakes and then learn from them, so.
Great advice, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Singleton, don't stop being who you are.
All right, next item, yes, Ms. Justice.
Can we just take a five-minute break?
Oh, sure, yeah, you want to take a five-minute break? Yep, we can see that. We will come back at 7:53, please. We will come back at 7:53, please.
Good time.
...
Thank you very much, we are back, appreciate that indulgence, and a quick break. Moving along with our next information item, overview of Summer Ignite. We'd like to invite Dr. LaShawn Smith to the microphone to tell us a little bit about the successes and the Summer Ignite program.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I do also appreciate the break so I do not have to follow Isaiah directly. So, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you information in regards to our summer learning program this summer, which is, as you all know, is entitled Summer Ignite. I think I've got control. Alright, I think it's really important to understand that we served almost, well, we served over 2,000 students this summer. We served about 1,000 elementary students from pre-K through 4th grade, and then we served 700 students in our middle school, and over 700 students in our high schools as well. So, it was very well-received by our families, and also very well-received by the community and staff. In looking at our outcomes, we were extremely pleased in the impact that it had for our youngest learners. You'll notice that the greatest gains were in kindergarten. And as part of House Bill 82, there was a requirement for both a pre-assessment and a post-assessment in mathematics, and reading, so pre-assessment, post-assessment, and reading and mathematics. And the assessment that we used was the I-Ready Assessment, and it assesses students in grades K through 8. For reading, we looked at really the fundamental skills, and the assessment itself is an adaptive assessment, but we also did look at comprehension for our older learners. But in our programs, we really emphasized those fundamental reading skills because we knew that there was a lot of unfinished learning for our youngest learners. And so, again, you'll take note that it was about a 15 percentage-point increase for students in just six weeks' time from our pre-assessment data in kindergarten to our post-assessment data. And mathematics, we saw very similar outcomes for our kindergarteners as well. Again, this is another assessment that is adaptive. Here, we emphasized number sense, we looked at base tens, we looked at multiplication tables. If you look at our older students, you'll see that there weren't as great of the gains, and it was because we were focusing on those foundational skills. And the fact that it's an adaptive assessment, it actually assesses the entirety of the curriculum, which of course, you're not able to teach in a six-week period. But it did, again, evidence very strongly in our kindergarten, first, and second graders just the impact that six weeks of instruction, 150 hours of instruction, really had and made a difference with those young learners. So, we were very pleased with those outcomes specifically. For our middle school students, 100% of our middle school students who attended met the requirements for attending and worked really, really hard, were promoted. So, we had a 100% promotion rate for middle school students. In high school, we saw the recovery, and of course, our folks who are familiar with high school understand what it means to recover a credit. Essentially, students did not have to complete the entirety of the course, there was some aspect of the course that was missing. There were components, you know, maybe that they failed to complete, or things that they failed to learn within the course. We had over 870 courses that were recovered, or credits that were recovered for our high school students. And so, you can see that breakdown on the screen. When it comes to new credit, it was an accelerated format. Students were able here to acquire 119 new credits. So, these are students who were able to get that first-time credit during the summer learning opportunity. And we have in the past offered credit recovery in high school, but never anything as extensive as this, and never anything in terms of offering the opportunities for new credits in the same way. So, this program for our high school students was extremely impactful. And that's also measured in the ultimate outcome for our students, which is graduation. We had 17 additional graduates come through our summer learning program. And we were able to celebrate quite a few of them in person just this past Thursday at our summer graduation. And so, with that new data, we do anticipate our graduation rate improving from last year and being somewhere above 88%, so that is what we are anticipating. I'd be really remiss if I did not acknowledge the hard work of all the folks who were a part of this summer learning, from the teachers that we hired to the folks that hired them. So, we hired 719 staff in a short period of time. Our Human Resources Department Division did a phenomenal job in recruiting and supporting and getting the staff members on board. You can see it's almost an even split between licensed staff members and those who were considered classified. Also, a big part of this were the folks that we engaged in this work. And one thing that the House Bill 82 allowed for us to do was to offer to our teachers and members, and other staff members who were a part of summer learning, some additional incentives. So, for New Hanover County Schools, we went above and beyond. We wanted to make sure that we recruited the very best and the very brightest for our summer learning opportunities. And so, here on the screen, you see a breakdown of employee by category, and then the bonuses and the salaries that were paid during our six-week summer learning opportunity. And then finally, this was a district-wide effort. We could not have done this without the services from our Child Nutrition Department. They served over 129,000 meals to our students who were a part of Summer Ignite, and then also our curbside service. And then, in addition to that, they served over another 34,000 meals to the Y-MCA that supported our students in their after-school program. With transportation, we supported over 2,000 children with transportation to and from school, and they had over 1,000 active bus stops. If this is what we're offering during the summer, I can imagine what it looks like during the school year. I have this renewed respect for our folks in child nutrition and transportation when you really see the numbers and what they do with the resources that they have. Student support services, we offered as a part of our programming not only instructional opportunities that were considered academic in nature, but we also offered social-emotional learning opportunities. And we contracted with the Department of Health and Human Services as our partner in this work for 15 school nurses. So, we provided school nursing services as well as COVID-specific support. And then finally, with special education, we provided special education and related services to over 650 students and offered the continuum. So, we not only had IEP services, but we also offered compensatory education as well as extended learning services as well. So, again, you know, just huge level of appreciation to all the folks that provided direct services to our students this summer, as well as all the folks behind the scene, whether they were hiring, or they were organizing, or they were planning, or coordinating. This truly was a district-wide effort to bring this to fruition. And we're extremely proud of the outcomes that we've seen and the services that we were able to provide to our students and their families. And glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. It seems that Summer Ignite was quite a success across the board. I guess, just my question that I have is what parts of this would you like to see replicated moving forward? How will this impact our summer learning, do you think, for the future?
Well, I really appreciated the fact that it was so very comprehensive. In the past, a lot of times, we've only focused on the content area. This year, we really focused on the whole child. So, we offered elective opportunities, we ensured that there was recess, there was opportunities for project-based learning, as well as social-emotional learning. I really appreciated the partnership with our Operations Division, our Human Resources Division, our Technology Division, our Student Support Division, and then of course, Finance to help pay for it all. So, to me, I think, you know, would have been helpful if the legislation would have come a little sooner. But if we can anticipate another opportunity like this for our children and our families, I'd love for us to start planning it a little earlier. But I think everything just really, really worked. I had the opportunity to visit schools during this time, and what I saw were a lot of happy children engaged in a lot of meaningful instruction.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this was from the legislative appropriations from their bill, this is how we paid for this, correct?
So, House Bill 82 was essentially the bill that told us what it needed to look like, but the dollars came from federal funding outside of House Bill 82.
Okay, now, that's absolutely wonderful because that means that was great for our kids, and we had that opportunity. Now, out of, I guess, my knowledge, in the past, we have summer school and opportunities for kids, as you said, certain areas to focus on. How many children normally participate in our regular summer programs as opposed to the numbers that actually were involved this time? I'm just curious.
So, typically, what we offer are Read to Achieve, and that is through the Read to Achieve legislation. We provide services kindergarten through 3rd grade. I don't know those exact numbers, but they're not, but they're definitely far less than the students that we served here. The greater difference, though, is really in the number of high school students that we serve. We've never really had the ability to offer something as comprehensive. In the past, we typically have offered seven to eight days, we have to end it by June 30th so that we can count those students in our graduation cohort. The rules changed this year, and we were allowed to extend that. So, what I would say is the biggest difference was really the opportunity for secondary students.
And middle school students too, also.
Yes, typically, there's not a middle school program.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm just trying to envision how wonderful it is, because it is.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to add, the one thing that I really liked was the focus was not so much on remediation and how much I didn't know, how much I'd lost, how much, how far behind I was, but the approach was more acceleration, you know, because everybody can accelerate from wherever point they were. And I really appreciated that theme from the state and continued and really, you know, managed here because it just felt different, you know.
Gentlemen, questions, comments, concerns, or Mr. Wildabour?
No, I think really, really pleased with the overall outcome, and it's great to see some extra graduates, that's awesome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Faust.
Okay. This will be a little lengthy because I'm going to add some other items in there. We've had an incredible productive summer, as always, our greatest success are the ones we share, and the good news... And the good news I bring today is thanks and the hard work, focus, and cooperation to our staff, students from across the entire district. We have been leading the way while always putting students first, and I'm proud to share accomplishments over the past three months. Last week, we had our summer school graduation and granted diplomas to twelve students, although seventeen graduated, twelve were at the ceremony. We're very proud and, I mean, the dedication that we were able to help them get their summer diploma. And, you know, it was, a graduation is always a good experience, but it was something about that summer one that actually just added a little, I'm not taking anything away from anyone else's graduation, but it was just great to see the extra push that it took and those students stayed with us. So kudos to those seventeen individuals. I also wanted to note my appreciation for the contributions to our staff who brought Summer Ignite to so many students. As Dr. Smith had stated, we hired more than six hundred employees over the summer, and we're currently just over, and this is the celebratory part here, we are just, we only have, only have ten teacher vacancies for the entire district. Now, they're in contract status, so we'll, you know, we've talked about bringing them back. So we are hopeful, think we're down, and I'm going to say this, and Allison will probably go like fall out of her chair, but she can make it happen. I think we're actually down to like five people across the district. And, you know, fewer our neighbors, we are so far ahead of them. And so I love to brag on the work that they have done. There have been several afternoons, evenings where you walk past the HR, their doors, and they're still calling. They're calling people, and they're getting the contracts, and they're making it happen for us. So we're looking forward to that. The majority of our leadership positions were filled in, filled by internal candidates supporting our commitment to helping our talented teachers become district leaders. Earlier this month, we held our leadership retreat, providing curriculum updates and professional development for our administrators and giving us the chance to connect with and uplift each other as we head into a new school year. We welcomed our teachers and ten-month staff last week in preparation. Preparations are well underway. Of course, if you go in any building right now, you'll see that the entire staffs are back. And the big celebration starts on Monday, where our buses will all roll. You'll have food in our kitchens and people in our building on August twenty-third. And so we welcome the board to go out and definitely visit our schools, make sure you have your mask on while you're in those buildings. But students will be here on the twenty-third, so the next time that we meet, we will be back into school and we'll be back in the way that I'm accustomed to leading, leading schools. So I'm excited about that. Sixty beginning teachers will bring new energy, sixty, sixty beginning teachers will bring new energy and perspectives to our district as they are welcomed and mentored by our experienced educators. Seven hundred and seventy-nine students enrolled in our early childhood education program, with more than eighty percent of spots now filled. Quality early childhood education lays the foundation for the work we do until our students graduate. We're so glad that so many of our families are taking advantage of this offering, knowing that we will be having a focus of literacy this year. One of the things that you'll be able to see towards the end is that we have aligned our pre-K centers to what they need to know by the time they get to kindergarten. So I'm excited about that. So we're going to be continuously looking at the improvements that are going on academically for our students. COVID update, this is what we've been waiting for. So I've lifted this from our North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services School's toolkit, and I'm putting in a condensed form mask. Earlier today, the New Hanover County Health and Human Services Board voted to mandate face coverings, face coverings in all indoor public places. The countywide mandate applies to everyone two years and older, regardless of vaccination status, and goes into effect this Friday, 5:00 p.m. This announcement supports our current masking requirements, and sorry, I can read better when I pull it out. If not, my mask gets stuck in my mouth, and so I do read well. It's just, I don't read well with a mask stuck to my lips. This announcement supports our current masking requirements. All adults and students in pre-K twelve through twelfth grade will be required to wear cloth, face coverings, masks indoors per NHCS Board of Education determination. To appropriately wear a mask or face coverings, the nose and mouth must be covered. If a person is unable to wear a mask, the mask exception process must be followed to support appropriate accommodations. Masks are not required to be worn outdoors. Masks are required to be worn on buses by CDC order. Masks will be provided to students who do not have one. For visitors, visitors, including volunteers, are no longer limited from the building, but must follow all precautions, including wearing a mask. It is not recommended to have visitors with students without the use of masks, such as during lunch. Quarantines. All adults and students, fully vaccinated individuals who have no symptoms are not required to quarantine if exposed. Individuals who have had COVID-19 and recovered within the past three months will not be required to quarantine. This timeline must be confirmed by the school nurse during contact tracing. Students only. Students who mask appropriately do not have to quarantine if exposed, even if not vaccinated. Specific determinations and appropriate masking will be determined by the school nurse in contact tracing. Staff and staff only. Staff who have been exposed and have not been vaccinated will have to quarantine unless, regardless of masking. This process will be managed by the school nurse. Communications. Email notifications and consultation with the local health department officials. It has been determined that masked emails to parents and staff regarding COVID cases are not necessarily or helpful. Direct communication from health department staff remains the most important and effective method of communications with those involved in a COVID exposure. District dashboard, in consultation with local health department officials, it is not advised that the district maintain a COVID dashboard on the NHCS webpage. To reduce redundancy, the utilization, the authorized authoritative source, the district will rely on the public health department's database and community dashboard. In-person learning is expected unless a student is enrolled in online learning or has a medical exception with a home hospital plan. Quarantine. Quarantine requirements are established by the New Hanover County Health Department and not by New Hanover County Schools. I'll say that again. Quarantine requirements are established by the New Hanover County Health Department and not by the school district. We continue to adhere to the guidelines established in the North Carolina Safe Schools Toolkit, which advises between seven and fourteen days of quarantine after COVID exposures, depending on symptoms and testing. And so, of course, you can go to the toolkit and it will share the rest of, when it goes down to screening, sharing materials, large gatherings, singing, and water fountains. And we will be following all of those in, to a detail in the toolkit. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you just said, and you know, earlier in the meeting, wanted to discuss the dashboard. I called it matrix, but it's the dashboard. You just said that it was recommended that it was not helpful. Was that from the health department?
That was from everything in our written. However, if it's the board's will, if the majority of the board wants it, we will. But however, Julie's department, Student Services, has all new employees that, I don't say all new, she doesn't have all new employees, let me take that back. Her director is new in that, and so they will need support. And so looking at what the health department has and speaking with the health, it's the same information. So the redundancy is what we.
Well, that's one part of redundancy, but it's also good information for the community. That's what I'm hearing. And so on, because I am going to add this to the agenda. When we do that in September, could you, you know, possibly?
If you'll send it to me.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, she doesn't do it.
Okay. No, I'm just, I'm just, and I'll take this off because I'm very safe over here. When we do bring that to the agenda in September, I would like to have somebody from the health department also speak on that when we have this discussion because I think that that would make it, whatever we decide, it would be based on using the information from health department's expertise, okay? Besides just ours and parents. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a comment.
Yes, Ms. McManus.
Do you truly feel that our employment success is because of our pay raise, which thanks to the county commissioners?
Well, I, yes, thanks to them in addition to the efforts and
Oh, yeah.
They, I'll say, the HR team accepted a challenge that I shared with them, that I wanted all classrooms, and I won't say just HR, everyone, there was a team effort, that I wanted everyone, well, when school started, I wanted all certified positions filled, and they have busted their behinds.
Well, as you and I shared, Wake County has a thousand teachers vacancies.
And we're in a single digit.
Well done. Anyone else?
Just a quick point of clarification, because we, you know, the emails come. Regardless of any decision that the board made, the decision today to mandate masks by the county would include New Hanover County school buildings. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that point was clear. And yes, thank you very much to our county commissioners and to our wonderful, incredible staff. I'm sure after they stopped crying when you gave them their directive, they got right to work. So thank you guys.
Now she's leaving.
Well, and the one thing I didn't say
What did you do to her?
And the principals, I must say, the principals because Allison did put a lot of pressure on the principals making it happen.
All right. Mr. Wildebor, did you have a comment?
I was just saying with Dr. Kocar, we're losing a great one.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Faust. That was a wonderful report with lots of good news and got some good clarity for the start of next week. Next item on the agenda is the board chairperson's report. I don't have a report. All I want to say is good luck to all of our traditional schools that are starting on Monday. We are so excited to welcome our students back into the buildings this year, and there's going to be lots of smiles. I know that we can't see them, but trust me, they are there.
Yes.
And it's going to be really important for that instructional time to keep our kids in those buildings. So good luck to all the teachers, staff. Welcome to all of our new recruits that have joined New Hanover County Schools. We are very excited to have you. Welcome to the team. And everybody, wish you a wonderful, great first day back to school. And thank you to the administration that has worked tirelessly all summer long to prepare for this.
Yes.
Thank you for your leadership, Dr. Faust, as always. And principals, thank you for everything that you've done this summer to prepare your staffs and your buildings to open for your students. All right, committee reports. I don't believe we have any committee reports, but I do believe we have some correspondence. Ms. Graybill, would you like to start?
Yeah, I just wanted to put another shout out to Dr. Faust, but mainly his team of central office staff, you know, from senior administration and all the folks that work for them, on putting together a wonderful Leading for Excellence conference for your principals and your central office staff. That you invited us twice to participate, so I don't turn down those kind of invitations. So of course, I attended, and it was awesome, I mean, just seeing the energy there. But I did want to highlight two things that really stuck out with me in one of the presentations by Jackie Jethro and Al O'Brien, when they talked about team and how important being a team was. And team, the acronym they used was T for Trust, having respectful explanations of what's going on, equity, but really equity in belonging, so that we all felt that we were all contributing members, no matter what team that we were on. Attitude of accountability, so that everybody felt that they were there at a team meeting to get something done. And then having meetings, they are important, but having meetings that matter. So I thought that was one takeaway. And the other one that I got, and this was put on by Julie Varnum and, oh my gosh, was it Katie Green? No. Pardon me? Elizabeth Murray? Yes. And so two of the things that I got from that one was, it says, "We often judge ourselves by our intentions, but others judge us, others judge us by their impact." And so we need to just make a conscious effort to, you know, just because we think we're doing good, are we really doing good? And I just, I love those. So, and before I leave, I want to just do my handshake buddy. I won't get to see you very often, so I just wanted to do my handshake to let you know that I was thinking about you and for you to have a good first day of school as well.
All right, thank you very much. And I believe, Mr. Bowyer, you had a comment for correspondence?
Yeah, just somewhat disjointed and very, very briefly. I think I've been to, I don't know, ninety percent of the schools in this county now, and I promise I will get to the rest of you if I have not yet done so. But my favorite school, the very first school I visited outside of my own academic career was in Afghanistan. It was in two thousand and six. And as we prepare to enter the buildings, I did just want to offer my thoughts to those people. And, you know, I hope we all spent some time over the weekend thinking about the miracles that happen within the four walls of our schools, because I know for a fact, some of the ones that I visited are going to be shuttered, and people are going to fight with their lives to get into them again. And here, it's a requirement, but it's much more than that. So I love the work that we do, and it was nice to celebrate some of that tonight. And I hope our teachers, our principals, all our staff in all of our buildings take some time to celebrate themselves and just to think about the work that they do. And to any veterans, thank you very much for your service.
All right, anybody else have any different correspondence? Ms. Justice?
Yes. I am so excited about Monday. Some of our schools have already started early, and I've been in them, and they're chugging right along. Kids are happy, they're great. And, you know, it's all possible because of all of our staff. We are a team, especially the people in the schools, and I want to thank them. I know that they're excited and exhausted, I know how it feels, for Monday. And as I said, every, every staff member, from whether, what part of the building you're in, classroom teachers, people in central office, people in the building's offices, you know, people in the cafeteria, those bus drivers who'll be the first ones to see the kids Monday morning. And I know that'll take a couple of days to work out. And by the way, remember that, parents, to have patience. But yes, I want to thank every one of them for putting all the efforts that I know that they're putting in until Monday. And I, and I know all the other board members, in fact, the whole community really cares and appreciates it, so I wanted to say that.
And anyone else? Mr. Wildebor? Mr. McManus, we good?
I just want to say that I'm just so excited about this new school year coming up. I think it's going to be outstanding. We have the best faculty and staff anywhere, and we definitely have the best students anywhere. So go get them, guys and girls.
All right. On that note, we'll move to announcements. The following board-related meetings will be held during the month of September. A September regular board meeting will be Tuesday, September seventh, 5:00 p.m. at the Board of Education Center here at eighteen oh five, South Thirteenth Street. Policy committee meeting will meet on Tuesday, September fourteenth, at nine a.m. That meeting will be held remotely, and the public may view it via the NHCS TV YouTube channel. All right, next item on the agenda, I believe we do have need for an additional closed session this evening. So I will go ahead and read this again. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute's one four three dash three eighteen dot eleven, A one, three, and six, to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statute's one fifteen C dash three nineteen and dash three twenty-one, to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, twenty USC, one two three two G, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including in the case caption, John Doe v. New Hanover County Board of Education at L., New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number nineteen dash CBS dash two seven four five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Is there a second?
Let Pete second.
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebor. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Bowyer.
Hi.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Graybill.
Yes.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebor.
Yes.
Motion passes. We are in closed session. Thank you very much.